The Riverside City Council for a work session for July 5th, 2012 to order. Call the road please.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Kirk?
Present.
Mr. Gilman?
Here.
Mr. Fagan-Camp?
Here.
Mr. Schott?
He here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Flaherty? Here. The next thing is the additions or corrections to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Besides that little moving around?
Do you want to move?
Yeah, I would like to do the discretion of issue two and trash before presentation. Is that okay?
So moved.
They're moved by Deputy Mayor Denny?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schott. On favor, is there any discussion on the motion? On favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motions carried. So that gets us into the work session items. First one is discussion of issue two projects. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now is the time on the calendar for the city to begin considering what project it can like to submit for issue two funding to the Ohio Public Works Commission. Repeatedly we had submitted the Harshman Road project which was funded last year. Approval was given last year, funding was recently authorized. Paperwork should be complete this month. So Harshman Road is no longer the priority, I guess, of discussion and so that opens the door for other projects for council to consider. Based on conversations that have occurred previously on this issue, Burkhardt Road is a project that council had previously discussed as well as phase of the Battle Street. Additionally, there have been some complaints from citizens and some notices from staff regarding the condition of Spalding Road which would be a smaller project. And then there is the Fair Park Fairfax Bridge. That was, as you know, closed last year as a result of structural conditions identified by the county engineer. We do have a grant application pending at ODOT and Municipal Bridge Fund but we have not heard back from them yet as to whether or not that project will or will not be funded. But those were two other projects that were two other potential projects that I wanted to at least make council aware of. Also, there is any other project that would qualify that you might think of but to date nothing else has been discussed other than again the Burkhardt and the Valley project as well as potential Spalding or Fair Park Bridge. So I did provide a memorandum to council regarding that group of projects with some thoughts that I thought were appropriate for you to consider but as always that I'll take whatever direction you're willing to provide in this particular discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. Ms. Campbell?
Which one is the worst in your opinion?
I think the universal opinion is Burkhardt Road is the one that is in the worst condition and is in need of help post-haze based on that condition. I would say probably Spalding is second to that but you know there are a lot of things that go into considering what we the city may want or may not want to fund but that's my opinion at least as far as the conditions of the road. Mr. Flaherty, I don't know if you care to offer a differing opinion but...
You were correct.
Flaherty?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Fair Park Bridge, when we did the, when we sent out the questionnaire to the residents over there, it came back kind of fifty-fifty, didn't it, on being a pedestrian bridge and being repaired and reopened?
I believe that there were a few more responses in favor of reopening the bridge that you hit with the traffic compared to leaving it out, replacing with a pedestrian bridge. But when you weigh in the opinion of the school, I would say that probably puts you about the fifty-fifty mark if you wanted to make that, if you wanted to make that school vote count, I guess, in a, in a grand scheme on a different project.
Okay. So it's, yeah, the people on Byzville are people who I've been hearing most of from. Due to that bridge being shut down, everybody goes to the next street which is Byzville cuts over. And so I've heard a lot of complaints from the folks on Byzville and of course there are others in the plot that have, are, have made a lot of noise but whether we want to consider that or not, but they have and you know, but then again should we, when, well, but again, we got that project in mind already so we wouldn't really want to put that on issue two project if we were already waiting on the other grant from the state.
You could tier the application, you could have priority one, priority two. We could, I'm hoping that we will have a definitive response from the Municipal Bridge Fund folks by month's end so that would also allow us to have a more clear understanding of whether or not the bridge will need other funding or whether or not it will all be cured through Municipal Bridge Fund.
The disposal?
Costs. I know we're not grossing bids from Burkhardt from when they were presented to us. Now, the scope is what we made the subject for fixing the road. Did they weigh with this figure? Were they included?
Yeah, the Burkhardt resurfacing which was a milling fill, so grinding off the top three inches, replacing those three inches with new asphalt, there was sidewalk infill and there was also some curb work included in there and that number was right around 1.2 million if I remember correctly.
Okay, that's right. And there was no structural roads up to the point where you've got to dig out the heavy duty maintenance?
Well, there are, yeah.
Are doing no necessarily.
Burkhardt is a tricky beast. The road itself, it needs to be reconstructed completely. Keep in mind that the cost to reconstruct that road completely to give it a 20 to 25 year service life is very, very significant in its total. We're talking like a 2.8 was the number just to reconfigure the Woodman Burkhardt intersection through Grandville. Okay, so very small portion of the project to take that crown out, reposition the utilities, set back up the appropriate drainage. So that project reconstructing for the 20 years, the 20 years of useful life is going to be very expensive. The milling fill will get you, I would say probably 10 to 13 years, Mr. Miller, is that a fair assumption, additional useful life on for Burkhardt without having to do significant alterations of slope and grade?
Bless you.
So that goes, that would go from the city of Dayton over to the city of Lillie Creek?
Yes.
The whole section there?
Yes.
Okay.
But doesn't the county want to repair or replace the water lines? Possibly the gas lines as well, director?
The original project which was funded, I believe, was '07, I think the calendar of '07 presumably got missed that project. And then the county called and said that they were going to step away from Burkhardt in a bulk sales agreement with Green County. We actually had a meeting with a county environmental last week and they indicated that they are no longer talking about bulk water sales to Green County, at least utilizing a main of Burkhardt Road. So that is no longer a concern in the event that this project were going through and this project were to be funded. That was the one selected by council, the county coming in behind it and then doing damage to any road surface.
Okay, so that's all on table then?
Correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Flaherty?
So, the current plan just doesn't mill and fill?
That's correct.
It doesn't do anything with curbs, sidewalks, or anything else other than taking the crown off of the Burkhardt?
How much of the crown will it take off? I guess that's, I mean it's a really large crown.
Yeah, it won't really take off much of the crown. So you will still see that kind of wicked peak there from Woodman just past Grandville, you'll still see that there even on the milling fill. Like I said, there are some curb work extensions mostly in the area of Woodman intersection where on the north side of Burkhardt you can see tires are getting off the edge of the road undercutting in that particular area. So there, there is some curb work in that area in the last proposal and then there were some sidewalk fillings on the north side of Burkhardt as you got closer to Smith and to Tineen. I believe there's a rough asphalt sidewalk over there and then there's some more conventional sidewalk there. So there was some patchwork in there as well but I believe out of that total 1.2 million of all-time concrete work was right around 150,000.
So you're saying the reheat process would say 20 to 30% off of that 1.3 million number?
That is correct. That is correct. Based on the information that we received from the vendor and from engineer Dan Flaherty when they looked at that earlier this year, the regional contractor that performs the reheat service was actually sold to a larger midwestern vendor out of Chicago. And that vendor is actually in the area to evaluate projects that were previously committed by the prior reheat technology owner. So they will be making stop here next week to verify that Burkhardt isn't the candidate for reheat.
Okay. So would you be putting it in as a reheat project or would you be putting it in as a milling fill regler so we get more money out of the 40% so we get it? How are you going to play that?
I think the most appropriate way to address that issue would be how we're going to handle it for the Harshman resurfacing which is we would make that an alter, an alternative bid on the technology. So you would ask for, you know, the traditional milling fill format, bid that and then reheat technology and then bid that as well.
Any other? Deputy Mayor Denny?
Okay, so the, everything I've got, Burkhardt was actually on our list this year but cost-wise we kind of pulled it off in favor of making sure Harshman got done. So I think that Burkhardt is going to impact the community the most and I think that's the direction we should go at the moment. And I know we're only going to get 10 to 15 years but we were planning on doing this in '07. If we keep waiting for the county to make up their mark, we're not going to have a road there anymore and we're going to have to go to the 2.8 million dollar fix and won't have any choice if we don't do this quickly. So I, I think we should, I think we should go with getting Burkhardt done and move forward and if, and puts, possibly puts Spalding in as a secondary project if we can.
Yes, Mr. Kirk?
I'd agree with Burkhardt Road priority but one of the things I'd like for to consider to add to our list of projects will be looking at new box culverts or whatever the appropriate structure would be for where Lillie Creek goes over Travis Drive and probably over Spinning Road. Those are streets where channel narrows currently as it goes underneath those, those bridges. And I would provide appropriate relief if we put in a wider box culvert or whatever appropriate structure might be to eliminate those bottlenecks that occur there. Maybe that will provide some relief to the citizens and all the creek. But now excuse, take a look at putting that on our project list somewhere. I don't see us going for Burkhardt Road. I think it's just a long time since this was addressed.
Yeah, we started a lot earlier in 2007. But...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Mr. City Manager, can you explain the reheat process?
Sure. In a conventional milling fill, what happens is, is one set of equipment comes through and grinds off the top two, three, four inches of asphalt and equipment truck that hauls away and then they bring in fresh asphalt and lay that down. And the reheat process, it's a self-contained machine if you will and what it does is it grinds off the top surface, heats it up, adds emulsion to the mix so asphalt will, if you will, heats that up again and you can also inject it with whatever other chemicals that we may want. Gilsonite which is a hardening chemical might be an application that we would think about putting in. Keeps all of that backup and applies it right back in place. So the reason that you're able to, vendors are able to offer a reheat process at a lower price is because they're mobilizing less equipment, they're having to purchase less, less material, they don't have to incur the fees to haul and remove, you know, the aggregate, the old, the old road surface and whatnot. So that's why the, the reheat process is, is more cost-effective. It hasn't been applied in great detail in Ohio. It does have other applications throughout the United States with Mr., with, which Mr. Miller and his folks have been researching, which Mr., Mr. Pointing Engineer has also been reviewing and investigating and it appears that the reheat process is just as, is just as durable in a professional process.
Okay, so we should be able to get 10, 15 years out of that discipline?
Yes.
Okay, well it looks like moves to go with the reheat process. Burkhardt Road could be, could be repaired under a million dollars, just under, about 96,000.
Correct.
If we get 40% of that, you know, that brings it down to about 600,000. That's, yeah, good, good thing for the community. Yeah, Mr. Flaherty?
So, in, in, I just did, City Manager, you reported up, there was some gifting of property at Fair Park Bridge?
Yes, sir.
What impact did any of them have on the project?
On the, on the Fair Park Bridge? Depending upon the scope that council wanted the city to undertake with regards to the bridge, it may have very minimal, it may have very significant. What it allows us to do in the event that there is a need to reconstruct the bridge configuration, how, like, it allows us to actually kind of skew the bridge and take away that real tight hairpin turn so we would actually be able to straighten the bridge out. Since it's a bridge, we'd actually be able to straighten the road out there a little bit and cut out on that goofy intersection that's there. So that is the real benefit that those parcels would allow us in the future council wanting to take, take on the task of reconfiguring and reconstructing that bridge and that intersection. That's the benefit there. I mean, it has some ancillary benefits even if we reconstruct the current configuration, its materials and product storage in close proximity and it also allows easy access to get under the bridge and work on that as well not only for the contractor given when that bridge is repaired but also for city staff when we need to manage that structure.
But that would be a big undertaking. I mean, we were talking doing the bridge with 300,000?
I believe to reconstruct the place was 300,000, to fully reconstruct what's happened on it. So if you went to a reconfiguration, probably be three quarters, three quarters of a million dollars.
So you're looking way down the road. You're not looking for this current?
Yeah, I mean, at some point in time, to Mr. Kirk's point earlier about the culverts, I mean, at some point in time you're going to have to address the volume throughout the creek. Okay? So there is the likelihood that in the event the city can assimilate a plan to address the creek, you're going to have to change off several of those structures and so at that particular location, that's the last structure in Riverside, there is a potential issue that you would have to update or upgrade the volume capacity of that, of that location. So, and that might be, that might be another benefit to that location long-term. While that is the last structure in Riverside, there is another structure that is smaller in nature in Dayton, right at Smithville. So it's possible that even if we were to update and upgrade our structures, effectively you would not have a dam effect at that particular location. So depending upon how the bridge could be configured at that location, the parcels that were recently donated to the city could actually be trenched out and get a holding facility, retention or detention capacity to accommodate for that smaller capacity at the, at the Dayton Bridge.
How big is, yeah, how big is the property that was given?
There are two parcels, so it's maybe eight quarter, two and a quarter and a third acre total.
So what I'm hearing is Burkhardt Road be number one? And which one do you guys want for number two, Spalding Road? And then we can study the Fairfax Bridge and hope that we get the grant that we've already had in and...
Yep, I like that word.
And then, you know, also like Mr. Kirk said, study the other bridges to see if that will help. Hopefully we can get some money from, an unlikely source would be DPNL because actually when we were cleaning the creek, there is a pole that's in pretty bad shape there. You guys really need to be looking at that because that, that is getting very dangerous and somebody's going to have to address that from, from DPNL's and also. And so, you know, maybe there will be some help from some unlikely sources that we don't even know about now. But there's, there's, there's some work needs to be done there, so. Okay, is that everyone's agreement? So I think we will have your orders. Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, next thing on the discussion is discussion of the trash agreement option. Mr. Manager?
This item is brought back pursuant to council request. Assistant City Manager Christian provided you updated memorandum per your request at the last meeting. With that, I will be the floor back in council for further discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. Anyone want to start the discussion on the trash?
Well, I did a little research on one of the neighboring communities that has low-volume option that they provide their citizens and that's the city of Kettering. They have, they have four tiers of service that they offer. One is unlimited service, that's $19.77 a month and an additional $3 for a month for 96 gallon toter. That also includes recyclables and bulk items. However, in the city of Kettering, if you want to put out yard waste, it's $3 a bag and you have to purchase the bag from the city or the city's agents such as some of the large stores or hardware stores, that sort of thing in the area. They have a limited volume service that they offer and that's two 35 gallon containers a week and no toter. 35 gallons is a modest size but keep in mind a lot of people put a couple, 30 gallon, 18 gallon to 30 gallon bags in a single toter. So two 35 gallon containers a week isn't, but it's a moderate amount. That's $18.29 a month. Riverside's current rate is $5.50 a month so we're $7.
$7.
We're, we're $7, $8 underneath Kettering. Now they have a senior low volume and that's $3.02 a month and for that you get one 35 gallon container per week. To qualify for that you have to be over 65 years of age and adjusted gross income of less than 30, that's about to be your, your pension, your social security, your interest and dividends combined. It's not earned income or anything like that, it's adjusted gross income, bottom line on your, it doesn't tax for that. Then you have something in between that and the other, the other volumes and they call that their low, low volume service two and that's $5 a month. For that you get one 35 gallon container per month. You set it out the first week of the month and that's your pickup. The rest of the time if it sits in your garage or your backyard or wherever you store it.
Do you get recycling with them?
You get recycling and you get bulk weekly. So that's your trash collection is one 35 gallon container collected the first week of the month. To give you an idea what a 35 gallon container looks like, I borrowed this from the storage room and this is roughly 32 gallon container. So, well, these, these trash cans that we have around the offices are probably six to eight gallons. So you get about three or four of these but that's roughly a 32 gallon container. So for a low volume of, for a senior, you get two of those a week if you're over 65 years of age and you have less than $30,000 in adjusted gross income.
So do you like that plan? How do they, how do they bill that? Just one second.
I don't know how to bill it. Well, they do, well, I'm sure they do their own billing because I know they don't put it on the tax bill. I think one of the, the service providers that we had here at the last meeting talked about a situation of when somebody puts out more than what they're entitled to. They have a, probably have a route sheet of some sort that tells the driver which properties are permitted to put out a 35 gallon container and which ones can put out as much as they want. And what those representatives said was that they, they put out extra, they tag the bag, put a sticker on it and they leave it there. They don't pick it up and take it.
They might color code those humans so they know to pick it up just once a month.
Well, you have a toter or you don't. If you don't, if you don't take the unlimited service, you don't get a toter. If you take anything less than that, you don't get a toter. So if you take the limited volume two which is two 35 gallon containers a month, you don't get a toter to put it in, put it out. You may get a smaller container but you don't get a 96 gallon cart or, or toter. Same thing with, you know, the other services, other levels of services. You don't get a 96 gallon toter to put your 35 gallon trash bag in.
Mr. Deputy Mayor Denny, I, I believe, I understand the whole purpose of giving different levels but I think the way with us putting it on the, on the taxes, I think it'd be very difficult for us to come up with a reasonable answer to be able to enforce that and, and unless we're going to, for no better word, be the aggregate, you know, we're going to aggregate and we're just going to tell everybody, okay, we, we've, we've got the bid, now you have to pay your bill and we have the, the companies bill them directly instead of putting it on their tax bill. I just, by putting it on the tax bill, I don't know how we're going to be able to enforce it. And I'm not real interested in having four bags of trash left for a month until the next month, you know, because some folks would just leave it there until we eventually got picked up and what's that going to make our city? picked up, and what's that gonna make our city look like if that happens? So.
The animals would like it.
Yeah, I'm sure the raccoons and the possums love it.
Mr. Wolf, Captain.
As an addition to what Mr. Kurb talked about, I looked up about the council's plan. They use waste management. They have a two-level option. One is a ninety-six gallon container, which costs fourteen seventy-five a month, and a thirty-two gallon approach, which costs about thirteen twenty-five a month. Also called over to Beale Creek, and again, they're a third of the west, and they hire their own trash haulers. And I'm not sure who the vendor was, but they're paying currently about fifty-four dollars a quarter for unlimited trash pickup in the city of Beale Creek. And again, I don't know if that's Ron Keefe, if that's waste management or anything else. I'm pretty sure it's not City Dayton. So I'm interested in encouraging people to recycle one way. You do that by doing this pay-as-you-go sort of approach, encourage people to put more into their recycling bins. But I understand the concern with leftover garbage going into garages or behind garages. I'd like to offer limited, people that have very little trash, an option. But like Mr. Denning said, I'm not sure how we accomplish that on the tax bill, although I'm sure it's possible that we could let them have a choice. So that's just a little additional information for surrounding communities or anyone. I understand Uprides is looking into mandating some plan, which they haven't talked about yet. I would think there'd be some integration, good things between the Riverside and Uprise that would happen because these routes overlap so much on the north side of that mountain.
And Mr. Brolin and I have talked about, in the event he can get the council to permit to do that, that we would cooperatively bid.
Would their stuff be done in time, though? I mean, we're talking October is when they said they anticipated having some answers, and it sounds like it's pretty close.
It'll be close. I don't know if we'll be ready to go before then or not, but we're gonna have to bid, I mean, we'll have to bid note later than probably first of October because we're gonna have to get that information back, you're gonna have to make the decision, and then we have to allow, I mean, I'm gonna say at least a month in December to allow, you know, Dayton and whoever the provider is, in the event that it is not Dayton, or that change happened, that they're able to coordinate change. So it'll be close.
And that was the nice thing about Dayton, you could interchange in the south and in the west. Those four ridges mixed in, and you get to the area Woodbine and Woodman, it's all interchanges also. So, you know, Dayton just kind of keeps right on going. They might even, if we do just toters, they might give us a better deal if they can just keep on, you know, using their toter truck.
I guess I'm really curious about how much it saves to go fully automated.
I know.
I don't know if we can, they're not gonna tell us that in the public session, and I don't know if we can get that information.
Well, I, excuse me, I think what they told us was ask them to bid it that way, and they will bid it, and then we get to see the numbers. So what we need to do, and I think what you needed from us, is what we need to have on the bid, the things that you would, that we need to ask them to bid.
Right. I mean, I'm sure that, I guess, I'd say, for example, let's call it pay-as-you-go. Is that a service while it would be nice to have, and while I'm sure it is a service that we were interested in the cost, is it worth our time to prepare bid documents that include that information if ultimately we're trying to find that number out of curiosity?
Before we go, if there's anyone in the audience would like to give their thoughts on this subject, please pull out a slip in the back and hand it up so that they can have a chance to talk about it. Ms. Campbell?
What size of gallon dump do we have now?
The containers currently, I believe, are the ninety-six gallon containers.
Okay, we pay twenty-four dollars a year for those.
I believe, I think it's around this amount, yeah.
Okay, what is the traction bill, since it's a tax?
It's eleven fifty, and then there's a three percent or five percent.
Use five percent for county's administrative charge.
That's a county's administrative charge.
Wait, do we still have a deal? I mean...
Yes, yes. Now, they have one...
Well, we don't know what to do then, we'll be...
When they initially offered...
I thought that was good for so many years.
Well, I mean, that, keep in mind that that was the arrangement proposed five years ago, and so the cost five years ago, two dollars a month for a ninety-six gallon container, is still the price today. When Dayton originally proposed a contract, it was semi-automated, but if council mandated the ninety-six gallon container, they would reduce the cost to one dollar a container per month if the city mandated the charge. Now, to the extent, Mr. Denning, that you had mentioned the automated, fully automated pickup, I would tell you that while that would be an interesting number to know, I would tell you that service is highly unlikely to be effective in our community because it requires parking restrictions. So again, while it would be nice to know what that number is, to be able to mandate that all of our citizens park in a particular place on a particular date, I think it's going to be significantly more cumbersome than anything.
I would be more interested in mandating that they put the trash can back in a specific spot instead of wherever they clean.
Not arguing that.
One time it's where it's supposed to be, and the next time it's in the middle of my driveway, and when I come home, I, you know, it's not the easiest thing in the world to go around. So, you know, I get a little frustrated with that situation. The one thing that I would like to see us put in the bid, and it would just be a general statement, is some sort of a, that they, whoever would get would have an incentive program for the city in general to increase their amount of recycling. So, as a, for instance, someone could bid, if the city increases their recycling by ten percent or twenty percent or whatever it is, that they would provide the city with some picnic tables for their park, or it could even be a fifty cent per person per month decrease in the cost of the service the next year. But I would like to see some sort of an incentive from them, and talking to them after the meeting last time, they said, at least a couple of them said that that would not be a problem for them to come. There are incentive, they do have incentive programs for other communities out there, so all I'm asking is that whatever we, however we ask them to bid, that we put some sort of incentive out, incentive program out there for our citizens so that they will, hopefully, we can get more recycling going.
I agree. We need to look at recycling, educate the public, and encourage recycling. But I also like the ideas from Fuller Camp brought up about the senior portion of the amount of trash that they put out there. Because we are a bedroom community, and we are, I don't know what the ratio is as far as retire rates in our community, but that might be something worth looking at. It might be a nightmare in trying to bill or figure out how you would bill that, but I think that's an option we might want to look at. But I do agree, we need to encourage and educate our residents on recycling.
Let me ask, can you do, can you ask for bids on two different ways of doing it? Like, could we ask for a bid on unlimited service and ask for a bid on containers that are sixty-four gallon?
But, and I think Ms. Christian can probably provide more clarity, but as I understand it, in our bid specifications, we would say that the lowest responsive bidder would have to be able to allow for unlimited pickup but provide two container options, or you might not, you might not even want a container option.
But we can't ask for two RFPs or whatever for two different kinds of service?
You're talking, so in other words, what is your price for unlimited service and then what's your price for...
And what is your price for a container, yeah?
You mean for limited, for limited?
Just for limited, yeah.
I don't see why you couldn't. The issue is going to be how we and the county segregate that out. In terms of the tax, right, in terms of how the bill, how the bill is assessed and how we keep track of the amount.
Well, I, on the limited, you would have, I'm guessing you would have to give them a certain size that we want. So as Mr. Kurb said, thirty-two seems small, ninety-six seems pretty large. So we would say, okay, we want a six, we want a price on unlimited, and then we want a separate bid on the sixty-four gallon container, and then when we get those prices in, then we would agree. Or you wouldn't...
What you would do is you would require them...
You couldn't afford it that day.
You would require them to bid both services initially. Now, the problem that you may have with the service providers, and they can speak better to this than I can, or Emily, if you can, is you're gonna have an issue getting a price because they're going to bid against the unknown, because we have not identified how many senior customers they're going to have, as opposed to senior limited.
Well, see, I wouldn't do, I would just say we do unlimited, or else we do toters at sixty-four gallons, if that's what everybody can agree on, and ask for just those two bids from each one of the...
I wouldn't worry so much about the size of the container. That is always easy. That's always, there are multiple size containers, and we can work that language into the contract. But the concern that I would have, and I think it's the concern that the haulers would have, is Mr. Smith here, he sells his house. He's on the limited throw, it's just him and his wife. So they're on a limited plane, so we're now going to assist them all year long on the limited plane. He moves out, and a family of five moves in. Now, that property's only paying for the limited throw.
That's not what I mean. I'm saying we do the whole, the whole city.
One way or the other.
One way or the other.
So we didn't move it?
We do the whole city either, we bid it as the whole city, one bid would be unlimited service, and the second bid would be on...
A limited service, yes.
Limited service.
Yes, you could do that.
And on the whole city.
Yes, you could do that.
Okay. And as your parking goes, we just have to tell people to push that toter out past the parking so that people can...
There's a difference, there's a tow, there's a difference between limited volume and fully automated, limited or fully automated unlimited.
Well, if we get the toter, then everybody would...
If you mandated the container, you could mandate automated service. However, you're going to have an issue enforcing provisions to allow for the automated service. We would basically have to send a police car in advance of the truck that day on that route if you wanted all of the containers emptied.
No, they learn pretty quickly, like they have to put it out.
I don't necessarily think that makes sense, sir. You may wind up having people that find ways to dispose of their trash in other ways in the event that you have a limited throw program, or in the event that you have an automated program and the container can't be picked up that day or that week or that month.
I didn't understand the concept of bidding the limited service. Are you talking about a multi-tiered limited service like Kettering or...
No, I'm thinking about how Dayton does it now with, they get a toter, you fill that toter, and that's all you get for that week, and then every week. And I think that's where our toters are now.
No, you can put bags beside them.
Oh, okay, well, Dayton you can't.
Stash them up as high as you can.
Yeah, I mean, you...
But there are landfill volume requirements that apply to the city of Dayton proper that do not apply to its vendors.
Well, the reason I'm thinking that is because, I mean, you have so much recyclables these days that most, a lot of people don't have that much trash. So if we could do a toter of sixty-four gallons and have that bid just for sixty-four gallons for everybody.
Then top it in, catch it with a ninety-six gallon recycle bin.
Oh, twenty-four dollars a year.
Oh, no, the recycle bin, Ms. Christian, what was the recycle bin that Dayton had?
They have ninety-six gallons as an option. Right now, the small containers that you have right now are about eighteen gallons.
Oh, so the other recyclers are ninety-six gallons?
Yeah, the big toters are, I mean, they have options. You could do thirty-two, sixty-four, and this ninety-six gallon.
I guess the concern I have with putting a limit on people is that when they reach their limit, what happens to the extra trash?
Exactly.
It ends up behind the grocery store, it ends up in cul-de-sacs in the middle of the night under covered darkness.
It ends up in the gutter and gets washed down into Lily Creek and clogs everything up.
But the other side of that is, is that people don't have as much trash as they have even five years ago. If you recycle, if you recycle, you don't, you know, you can, it's hard, I...
But I think that Mr. Denning's point of view incentivizes the recycle provision, then those people who are prone not to recycle have a desire to recycle.
Hopefully.
I mean, that...
All you can do is put the incentive up there.
Right. I mean, those who are gonna recycle, recycle. I mean, to the extent that even my family and I, you know, I mean, we're a family of five, and I have two sixteen gallon containers that are already full. I've got three thirty-two gallon bags full of recyclable materials next to them, and my ninety-six gallon toter has two trash bags in it, and trash day is tomorrow.
All in a week?
Uh, yeah. Family of five, after all, family of five.
Milk jugs take up a lot of space.
Yeah, I don't know, milk a day.
But, I mean, but, so those of, so those people who have the desire to recycle, who are environmentally conscious are going to do that. And then there is a group that could be incentivized to change their mind, and then there's a group that just, they're not gonna care. You could give it to them for free, they recycle.
Well, if you have a neighbor that only has a small amount of trash, you could take it and put it in, ask them if you could put it in his. Mr. Mayor?
Can I bring mine over here now? I'll just cancel mine.
Well, you can do that.
I think we should just go ahead and go to semi-automatic, um, with the, with or without the cart. I think we should bid on that, educate people on recycling. You know, I don't wanna force anybody to, you know, to do it that way. They'll just be voluntarily do it, educate them why we like to see recycling, you know, done. And also throw in the contract, the vacation hold, you know, for the snowbirds who takes off, you know, in December or November, and don't come back until March, you know, they don't need to be paying for trash because they're not putting trash out. We should have that option where that can be eliminated from the bill if that's possible.
I don't think I can do that.
That's it, you know, that's, you know, that's...
It's on the tax bill.
Yeah, that is on the tax bill, but can they submit to the county, you know, that, hey, I'm gonna be, you know, on vacation from November to March, or submit to us and we submit to the county, please don't, you know, tax me for trash removal when you're not picking up any trash.
That may be possible, but I would advise council not to consider that because what will happen is everybody will say that they're snowbirds, and then we have, and it's incumbent upon us to go and verify that these people are actually gone, because ultimately what will happen is the waste hauler will pick up more trash than what they're being paid to pick up, and then that's gonna create a problem.
Yeah, perfect, okay. But, okay...
So you're suggesting unlimited, just like we do now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They should move right now.
Yeah.
But with more education on the recycling.
And an incentive program from the haulers.
Or just get bid on that and others.
Boy.
I like that.
I would really be interested in knowing what an automated service would save us, fully automated, requiring everybody have a toter, whatever you call it, to know what the savings would be. I know, no, it's just can't be out of interest, but I think it's something residents might be willing to adjust to if they see a significant savings.
It doesn't hurt, no. It doesn't hurt, no. Like, like Brian is always, you know, mentioning it, it costs us more in the long run to, you know, what, you know, force it to get everybody out of the way so the trucks can come in and pick up the material.
But I think he told us, he told us it was gonna save us a dollar a month. I didn't hear about it, so I...
No.
A dollar a month on the toter.
What, the way that Dayton had proposed it would be that they wanted to mandate the container in semi, on a semi-automatic pickup.
Right.
So that their guys wouldn't have to lift the old conventional metal trash can or the plastic, you know, so that their guys could roll it, so there was less lifting, thereby minimizing injury to their personnel, and that's why they were willing to make that offer. So it wasn't to provide the fully automatic service.
Right.
It was semi-automatic, but...
So it would be a dollar?
But that was gonna save us a dollar.
Yeah.
On the toter?
Yeah.
That was Dayton's original proposal five years ago.
Right, I remember that.
Right, but, but the savings wouldn't come about just the saving. It would be one person on a route versus three, it's a labor issue. Yeah, I understand. And I don't know what that number would be, so...
Now, when Dayton was here, they said there was a considerable savings to them. The way they do it now is they only have recyclables every other week and walk, pick up once a month.
Yeah, we got that.
That's in Dayton, that's in the city of Dayton.
Exactly. Why don't, would we wanna consider doing that?
I like it the way you did it.
You get, you heard just a prime example from the city manager.
Because I like our city recycling.
He has more recyclables than he has, you know, throwaway garbage. You mentioned it's good.
You could effectively do that, sir, but you would have to require that everybody receive the ninety-six gallon recycle container. And I don't necessarily know if we would be in a position to do that. Again, Dayton's issue has been with instituting... Again, Dayton's issue has been with instituting these changes, they're trying to get underneath their threshold for the landfill requirements. That's why they're making those changes in service. But because we do not have the population density that they do, we are not required to meet those mandates, which is why we can still have unlimited service.
But I still, well, I wonder if there'd be a savings, so I, I would think there'd be a savings. Because now they have two trucks going every week. And, and then they also have the walking waste pickup every week going around.
They do have walk pickup for the week?
Isn't it every week?
You have it, you call once a month.
You call in, they'll come?
Yes.
Well, that's the way it is right now. And then if we can get a dollar cheaper, it's great.
But if we can get a cheaper, they only have walk pickup once a month. I mean...
Yeah, then that's something has to go around, right, all the people up the long, about the street.
Yeah, and that's the only problem, if you have a landlord has a person who moves out and they put all their stuff out open up to go up and down.
I think what you're going to save is, is not going to be enough to offset the inconvenience for the residents and the house.
You don't think so, two trucks out on the road that don't have to be out there?
And the dirtiness of the city.
I don't think so. It's like, you know, like we said, that trash is going to go somewhere. Is it going to go behind the shopping center and their dumpster or in some vacant lot?
No, if they come around everywhere. Even if we have walkie pick up every two weeks instead of every month or every...
Well, as it is, if nobody calls, they don't see a truck.
Right.
Right. It's only when they call.
Yeah, I think it's great that way.
And I, you know, in driving through the city, I don't think there's that many calls for walk pickup.
I would just simply say that if you had it, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. This is not a dissimilar service from what we have for waste management. This is not a dissimilar service from what we have with Dayton. And the complaints that we had in '07 and the last year, waste management were not related to any one of the elements of service. Majority of complaints that we've had being when Dayton have not been related to service, they've been container placement. So I would say that from the bulk of users, the fact that we're not hearing complaints that, wow, I wish they would recycle more. Or, wow, I wish that they would do bulk pickup less, to me, would indicate that, while I'm perfect, we dial in a service as close to, acceptable to the community as possible.
Just wonder how much money we could save by stopping that, or the...
Thirty-seven dollars.
All right, um, can I have a discussion from council? I mean, we do have some folks who would like to speak on the subject.
He's looking for direction.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, not yet, we want to hear from our citizens first.
Okay.
All right. Tim Bass, Tim, if you'd like to come and talk to him?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm actually with Republic Services. We own Allied Waste here in Dayton, and I wanted to make sure you guys know I was here. You can look at doing a limited base program with a sixty-four gallon. Brian's correct on the fact that if you're going fully automated, you have cars, it's a challenge. Doesn't mean you can't go semi-automated where they pull it out, and that's really the most ideal way. The cost savings, Councilman Felling Camp, it's in workman's comp. That's where the cost savings at, it's back. It's, it's not even the labor off the truck because you go from a hundred and eighty thousand dollar piece of equipment to a three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. The labor long has outweighed it, it's actually in the workman's comp savings. If you're looking towards a true limited, and Deputy Mayor Daniels, you want to increase recycling. Unfortunately, education's not the best way unless you're doing it in schools, and that takes years to get up and through. The best way is unlimited source program. But the question is then, how do we control it for our people who have extra? If you look, there's a city, and I'd be glad to take any of their city, Medea in Cincinnati, they have this exact same thing. It's probably one of the cleanest cities I've ever worked in. They have a thirty-two gallon container that the residents get for free. And they can buy a dollar sticker for the rest of their garbage. And you can do with the sixty fours, well, I would recommend a sixty-four for thirty-two. Thirty-two's are absolutely small. Sixty-four works better. Half of that dollar goes back to the city, which they put into different parks funds and things like that. The other half comes to us for the trash, the actual trash cost, because it's our cost, it's absolutely lower than the city cost overall. So it allows you to increase your recycling because you're minimizing how much trash they get for free, which is good because then you get an increase in your recycling. But then it also helps you control your pricing. By the resident, they have a lot in a week, they buy the sticker, they put it on, fifty cents goes into a council fund of some sort that you set up. The other fifty cents goes to the hauler. It's a very common approach and it helps achieve everything that you're looking for. Getting the container out there for the funliness of the city, increasing recycling percentages, so you're up in the thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent. That's where Medea is at now. And then also getting the automation to get the reduction of costs there. So I just want to let you guys know there are some options out there. Yes.
So, so what is their base rate?
Um, they recently did, and I believe they're eleven fifteen?
A month.
A month.
But that's...
So that's with a sixty-four gallon?
So the thirty-two. But I'll tell you, they pack those thirty-two's.
I'm sure they do.
Is that the largest you have?
That's the largest, no, we go with ninety-six, okay?
Those would be better that way, because sometimes people put the little ones out, if you get a storm, it rolls over, trash all over the place.
You do, you, if you look, I was in the city of San Francisco, actually Daly City, just outside of San Francisco, very windy place, had a big can problem with the rolling over. They put the containers in, trash blowing out, container stops. Raccoon problem goes down, it's harder for raccoons to get, squirrels will get right through the lids, it's surprising to me, but raccoons won't. But if you go with something in that manner of a sixty-four, you limit the garbage. Now sixty-four gallons, as Brian says, is going to contain most people.
Now, can you have a, like, say I wanted a ninety-six and he wanted a sixty-two, can we have choices what size we want?
Sure.
That would be good.
We can do that. And what we get in that situation was sixty, thirty, thirty-two survived, given by the city. Now you want to upgrade to a ninety-six or a sixty-four in theirs. It was two dollars extra a month, that's paid for by the resident, same as the stickers. So it's a little bit more expensive because you have a little more trash, but it's still controlling, you have that control.
Well, I got a ninety-six gallon, sometimes I have one bag and some other times I might hold a fill-up.
Yeah, that's a, a lot of older people have trouble with those being ninety-six.
Sixty-four, in my opinion, is probably the best size if you have an older community. Thirty-two's, people tend to pack it in, it doesn't come all the time out, it gets hot, it gets wet. You get the sixty-four, it works great. If you have an extra bag, you put the sticker on it, throw it in. What they do with their large items is it's ten stickers, it goes out with the trash and they pick it up at the same time. Okay? What we see and what we're seeing constantly right now out of our, out of our H H grabs or Best Buy, they'll take away this stuff for free. Okay, how does that help the community? A, you're paying right now to be picked up, because if I don't have to pay for it, I just say that it goes away. But now, if I know, I ask that question when I take, when I go to buy something, do you remove it for free? Yes, we do. They take it, it's out of my hands. My community's not paying for it for that reason.
No, it's like, if a toter was tear up, they're replaced free, right? That's why I think we have now, big toders.
So that eleven dollars and whatever it is includes, in that case, thirty-two gallons?
And their recycling.
And recycling and the threat to sixty-four, I would make a question.
Sixty-four, you have a difference in cost at the, at the transfer station, you have Montgomery County transfer being in flow control. It's a little bit more expensive than Cincinnati where we can haul it, that we can control it ourselves. Take that away, it's not that much. The big thing, Mayor is right, every other week recycling, that's a big savings. You're taking the three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment off the road and driving. There is a lot of savings to be had there. If you can go with ninety-sixes there, it does work.
For recycling.
Every other week with a ninety-six, it really works. Now, um, I think you have, what, eleven hundred residents?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty thousand.
About ten thousand.
Residents.
Ten thousand homes.
Ten thousand homes.
I'm sorry, I had it off by ten, ten thousand, minor details. Um, but what you're looking at is you have ten thousand homes would equate to about a million dollars of container capital. So it is a large outlet. I don't know what the length, your contract's been five years, correct? If you can go longer, that'll also help reduce your cost. It also controls because the capital outlet is lower and it breaks it down. Even if five year with a five-year option on, helps us, helps all competition bring the price down at a time. Because you're actually taking that container capital out longer and depreciating it right away or now.
And keep the price down every day now would be great.
I can't guarantee obviously the other price, I haven't looked at it, there's, you know, many factors.
Yeah, we can judge by that, yeah, but, yeah. I'd see if they don't have.
But I, as I said, if you guys would like to go down and see Medea and see how it actually operates, I'll be glad to give my card afterwards, I can take company down. Brian, obviously, more than welcome as well. And, and Shay, I know Emily, you had the DVD of automation. And they made it look great, and I know the city of Montana, Montana, Polk County, Florida, which has no on-street parking, so it looks wonderful there. It's not quite as easy as that works, but I can show you how it works in a place that does have a lot of street parking and we still can't run automation.
So it's still, when there's street parking, how does that work? There's an extender or something?
Pop out of the truck. They get out of the truck.
Oh.
Instead, instead of getting out of the truck a thousand times a day, we can cut it to three hundred or four hundred times a day. There's a lot less wear and tear on man. Our human capital becomes a lot longer and longevity becomes a lot longer.
And the recyclable barrels are just like the toders you...
Same ones, just a different color lid. It's the only difference.
Does the Medea fee include yard waste or how they end the yard waste?
They put it all, they combine it all together. So if they have a sticker, it goes on yard waste or trash either way.
I think you can put it in the dump.
Put it in your can, dump it the same. There's not a large, you'll see in the next five to ten years a large change in, I think your next contract that I bid will have a lot of different things out there with organic composting and, and yard waste composting and this composting and dry waste is the next big thing. Um, but that's still five years off, so they really, five to ten years to really sort out where is the revenue? The problem is, it's an unfortunate fact, if recycling goes up, the commodity market's dropping for it, so it kind of has a counterbalance. The word. And as the Chinese economy moves, so moves the recycling commodity price.
Very good, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Bass? Thank you very much, that was very informative.
Not at all, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Hoskins?
Now, he came up, answered my question. I was thinking, well, there's two people in a house, senior citizen, I have three bags in my trash can tonight. And it causes disagreement, because I told the wife, I said, I ain't taking it out, she said, that's your own payment board. So seniors like me, we can get by every other week really easy.
I got one bag in the house earlier.
I could go longer, but I just had two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins, thank you. Okay. I personally would like to seriously ask the council to consider, in my opinion, a sixty-four gallon toter and then a sixty-four gallon recyclable every two weeks.
Sixty-four gallon recyclable?
Sixty-four, we have, tell them we have to get a sixty-four gallon toter recyclable. And we get a sixty-four gallon trash container and have the recyclables picked up every two weeks. Since right now, I mean, not right now, we have a small little one and I fill it up, but how many gallons does that, sixteen gallons? Eighteen gallon? So you, you get a one that's bigger, sixty-four gallons, and do it every two weeks. As Mr. Bass said, you can save a whole lot of money.
Well, I mean, like, you can pick the size you want, right? I mean, I live, I'm like...
Not if we decide one to be.
I think we should go with a larger, definitely go with a larger recyclable.
And then just do every two weeks?
I think we can ask the difference in the price for that, but I don't, I would like to, you guys show me dollars and cents.
Because you say, if I just say, look at the wear and tear you save here.
Well, no, no, I, I... I appreciate all that, but if the difference in the price is, is, is a dollar a month, and there are weeks when, when I'll fill up a sixty-four gallon in a heartbeat.
Recyclable?
Mm-hmm.
What do you get in it?
Every, when my grandson's there, milk jugs.
Now, Mr. Polk?
Addressing this automated issues, what you're saying is automated is okay, and when needed to be, you go with semi-automated anyway. You'll default to that condition, which a bid is an automated program.
Yeah, true, fully automated is very rare.
Just have to bid.
I mean, you have to have streets cleared and everything, as the city manager said, so you're really bidding semi-automated.
But what you're suggesting though is that rather than ten thousand households that you have to jump out of, you'll, you'll jump out for three thousand.
Right.
Using your percentages.
And I, and I personally, in the bid, I wouldn't even require an automated or non-automated. You're requiring a toter or a cart. Allow, allow the hauler to choose which side they want. That would be your best price.
What about inclement weather? How's that automated pickup go?
Just fine.
You got stove drafts, stove piled up from the plow trucks coming through.
We can pull it out. Not a problem.
Or the trash, or the bin, or the toter won't be there because I can't get it out to the curb.
The recycle bin, they all have wheels on?
Yes.
Okay, because I got mine's full, they, I get paid up.
Mr. Polk?
So, so back to automated versus semi-automated system. You're saying, you're saying not specify semi-automated or automated?
Just say you want toter.
Specify the part.
We want toders and then they'll, then they'll, they'll bid based on what's the equipment they have on hand.
Right.
Okay.
Allow the hauler make their decision, it's the best. We may have a town that we're fully depreciated at, that we can put in that's less expensive and helps control costs.
Right, thanks.
Totally against the bi-weekly on pickup, so...
Yeah, I am too.
On the recyclables?
Right, totally against it.
It's just to confuse the resident.
Yeah.
But Dayton does it all the time and they're not having any problems.
We're Riverside.
They're not having any problems, so we have to see what, there's a community not having any problems, I don't care what their name is. If they're not having any problems and they're going to save us trucks going up and down the streets, ruining our streets, we're, they're going to save us...
Some residents are going to remember to put it out on the second Tuesday of the month, or the fourth Tuesday of the month, or whatever that may be.
I don't think it would be that hard.
I think you're going to run into the same problem we just talked about earlier. The stuff ended up in the dumpsters and...
If they have to hold it a week.
And so forth, it could. They can't remember when to, when to put it out. If you miss that, that second week to put it out, now you got to go another few weeks before you can put it out.
But if you're going to save about two, three bucks a month, would it be worth it?
Yeah, you're going to say...
A lot of trash you might have brought.
Mr. Shaw, why are you so opposed to that?
Because, because the amount of recycling, if you want to encourage people to recycle, now you're going to even make that more difficult by having it bi-weekly.
But you give them a ninety-six container, or a sixty-four gallon container instead of versus an eighteen gallon?
There are people who can fill that sixty-four up because it accepts cardboard, plastic and all kinds of paper materials. They can fill that up in a week's time. Now, if you want to recycle, make it convenient for them to recycle, don't make it inconvenient. Because you make something inconvenient, it's not going to happen. That's you, but we're talking about the general, you know, general community. People, if you make it convenient for them, they will do it. And at this point in time, I'd rather them recycle, make it convenient for them to recycle, and we can go, you know, and move on and, and get that project and see, and see... Because you, you, we can change it. I think we can change it to a bi-weekly time after, you know, after the five years.
Not a year, oh, after the five years.
Yeah, after the five years, we can change it again.
But if we get a lot of dollar savings there for the residents? Okay, all right, Mr. Denny?
Well, here, here's, here's the problem. The problem with recycling every two weeks. Um, even though we're supposed to rinse everything out, how many of you really rinse out every milk jug and every can that you got before you throw it into recycling? A lot, most people don't, okay?
We do.
And so therefore, if it sits there for two weeks, especially in hundred-degree heat, it is going to smell good.
It's not like there's a lot of garbage, it's just going to...
No, it's the milk, it's the milk jug and the can with the tomato paste in it. I'm just telling you.
I don't, I don't think that's...
I think, I think it's important and we need to make it convenient to them, to, for them, to be able to recycle. And I think definitely go with sixty-four, four gallon. It's not called a toter, it's not called a toter.
Cars.
Cars.
I like it every week.
Toters.
If you do it every two weeks, you're going to have trucks overloaded, then they're going to have to make extra trips and it's going to cost more and something like that.
It sounds like the majority of residents go weekly. So I, I would think we just go ahead and go to our, you know, unlimited program, you know, with or without, with the cart. And let people choose what size cart they want because they pay for that anyhow. And, and just keep it simple, don't, don't make it this bid process so complex.
But we're trying to save money for our residents.
With residents?
We're trying to save money and save our streets.
But you're also trying to inconvenience our residents. I do one every two weeks, I think you're really underestimating our residents.
I think you're underestimating our residents.
Both sides here. Both sides here.
Thank you. I, I mean, I know we're not Dayton, but if Dayton folks couldn't handle it?
Well, it's why we.
Imagine that our folks can't handle it.
Right, well, see, get the bids, and then take it from there.
Well, we have to tell them how to bid.
Well.
We don't need more.
Well, I, I guess, I would like to see the dollars and cents of the two weeks versus every week, okay?
Can we get that?
Well, of course you can.
Not before without bidding?
Oh, is that not?
No, we have to ask the bid.
We gotta ask for the bid.
Oh, ask for the bid, oh, would you be willing to bid?
We can ask you.
If you want to, yeah.
Yes.
If that makes you happy, Mr. Mayor of Sovietia.
That would make me very happy.
We can ask for it all ways, and then we can make a decision.
Oh, okay, okay.
But we can also, hold on, but we can also ask for sixty-four, sixty-four limited, and unlimited. Hold on, we can ask for the bid, we don't have to, we don't have to take it.
I'd like to see that bid, to limit, to limit the amount of garbage that people are gonna put out, just to see.
No, still.
And to really encourage people, you know, give them, give them the incentive from the other side of saving a little money by recycling more. So. One thing we need to talk about is the billing mechanism. Because if we're going with all these options, giving people options to.
No, 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 no. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm gonna give people options, I'm saying.
We're gonna do it this way or this way.
One way or the other. We're either gonna be, we're either gonna limit everybody to sixty-four gallons.
And a sixty-four gallon?
And sixty-four gallon.
Recycling.
Recycling, or we're gonna go the other way.
Let me restate it, giving people options. If we're looking at options of a ninety-six gallon toter versus a sixty-four gallon toter, and people have extra trash, now the question comes up, how do we work that into the bid as far as the payment? Because you can only, you can't do an assessment and then ask the county treasurer to deduct on certain months because somebody's a snowbird in Florida. Or they're in Michigan, or Wisconsin.
We threw that one out.
Yeah.
If you're gonna ask for different levels of bidding, then you've got to consider the billing mechanism in that bidding process, bids that you get. Because if you're putting a limit of sixty-four gallons of regular trash, sixty-four gallons of, of recycle, and somebody has more than sixty-four gallons of regular trash, how do the waste haulers handle that, as far as telling us how much to have the county auditor assess against the tax code? That's a, that's a.
I think that was answered.
No, it's a billing issue. And, and what you're doing, if you're gonna use stickers, then that's one thing, but if you're not using stickers, then what do you do with the extra trash, because they're limited to sixty-four gallons?
Well, I think, I think what we're, what I was looking for, was I would like to see the, the price of the sixty-four, sixty-four. Okay, limited, limited trash, limited, um. To, to, for the.
Recycling.
Recycling, okay, every, and, and then I would, I would also like to see the price on unlimited trash with a sixty-four gallon recycling bin, okay?
I thought we had the option for ninety-six.
Let's finish it up.
With, with a ninety, with a ninety-six gallon, that would be a ninety-six gallon trash can. But that would be unlimited, so if they put extra, if they, they fill up the ninety-six and they put extra out at Christmas, it still gets picked up, okay? But I wanna see the, I wanna see the differences in the price there, so that I can make an educated decision on whether, which way we should, should go. Now, if we choose, if, if the lower price is, I mean, if it's tremendously lower, to go sixty-four gallons of trash, then we come up with the sticker program, you know, that goes with that, so that if they have eighty-seven gallons of trash, you can, they can put a sticker on there, and, and the hauler gets fifty cents, and we get fifty cents, or whatever the deal is. But that, I mean.
You, you already know the answer.
You're, you're gonna, you're gonna have to know that in advance.
Okay.
You're gonna have to know that in advance. So basically, if I have this, if I understand the conversation to this point, you were asking us to assemble a bid package for two distinct services. First would be a required sixty-four, with an option to plus up to the ninety-six gallon container, trash, unlimited service, with a ninety-six gallon recycle.
Or it could be a sixty-four gallon.
Let him finish, let him finish.
Unlimited service.
Right.
Can I go on?
Then you were asking for a sixty-four gallon, limited general waste, with a six, with a ninety-four gallon container mandatory for recycling. And then for the vendor to propose their solution, or their remedy to address all trash in excess of the sixty-four gallon container.
You forgot the bi-weekly on recycling.
Yeah. Or we would throw the bi-weekly in there.
Nah, I thought you was throwing the bi-weekly on that one.
Well, okay, let's, let's back up. I, as, I guess I don't understand, I think you could do the bi-weekly recycling on unlimited trash, but you couldn't do a bi-weekly unlimited trash.
Is that, oh, really?
I, I'm saying you could, I'm saying from, I'm saying from a realistic perspective, if you were going to compel me to limit my trash, I'm gonna get creative, or I'm going to be more diligent about recycling, because I've gotta drive down the amount of traditional trash that's going into my container. So therefore, I'm going to get creative in identifying, or I'm going to be more diligent in identifying recyclable materials. So all I'm saying is, okay, if you wanna do sixty-four, sixty-four on unlimited, whoop-de-doo. But if you're gonna compel sixty-four limited, then you're gonna have to allow for the extra recycling, and you're gonna have to allow for it weekly. I don't see how you're going to limit collection, and not provide an alternative location for that refuse to go.
So you're gonna have to put the recycling on the unlimited, uh.
The bi-weekly.
The bi-weekly.
Both will have to be unlimited.
What I, what I would say is, is that you would have unlimited trash.
Like we do now, without the toders?
Unlimited trash mandating the sixty-four container, mandating the sixty-four recyclable container. You could do recycling every two weeks. If you are going to limit the amount of trash to sixty-four, then I would tell you, it's my opinion, you would need to go to ninety-six gallon recycle pickup every week.
Like we have now. That's what I, I really see it like we have now.
Now you have unlimited.
That's what, that's what.
What I would like to see is what we have now, exit.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, no, no, you said you wanted to talk.
Well, you can tell each other.
I never tell you to shut up, but go ahead.
The unlimited, like we have now. What's wrong with that?
I didn't say there was anything wrong with it, I'm just trying to understand what council's telling me to do.
I'd like to see it done that way, unlimited. Was it, he said we can pick the size of container we want, or is it mandated?
If I was gonna do unlimited, as you're doing now, I wouldn't even require a container. You're, you're adding costs for less benefit from the hauler's side. The container didn't like that it fits the city's look, and it's just, it's, you're less expensive moving that on containers. Hey, I think your best o, option here, if you, if you really wanna get down, make it easiest for Brian, bid like you do now, and ask for alternatives on limited garbage, and ask me to ease bid for Brian to do, and a lot, you guys see a lot of different options.
What was that again?
You bid exactly like you have it now. And then ask for alternatives to be reviewed at the time.
Exactly like we have it now, so, and then ask for.
I would, I would disagree, and I appreciate the suggestion, but the problem is, is everyone's gonna bid it different.
Right.
And so what'll happen is, is they may have the best bid, they may have, under certain conditions, and Dayton would have a better raise under other conditions, and so you're not comparing apples to apples. That's why you have to be, and I appreciate, and I appreciate you trying to make it easier on me. But at the end of the day, what you're gonna have is, you're gonna have every contractor who's not selected trying foul saying, well, that's not what we did, and you did specify container size, and so we went with this size. Had we known, if we'd gone with that size, you know, you're gonna wind up creating figureheads at the end of the day.
Well, can you break one down, how you want it?
Let's do it.
And then have the unlimited too, you know, a couple different bids.
I, I, you could, I'm just trying to make sense of all of the thoughts that everybody has put forward on the table, so. If my understanding is incorrect, oh, that, that's fine, you'd be better understanding, you'd be better.
One like it is now, one like it is now, and what whoever else wants a different one.
Okay, one like it is now, okay, I agree with that. Okay, and then one where we have recyclable every, every week.
Bi-weekly.
That would be two, two different bids. Like Dayton.
Did you listen to what the city manager said, in terms of, if, if we limit garbage, there'll be more demand for recycling?
But if we get a ninety-six gallon container versus an eighteen gallon container, that should solve that problem. But if we're gonna go unlimited, it's not gonna, okay, wait a minute. If we go unlimited, then we're not limiting the trash. So a ninety-six gallon recyclable then, every two weeks?
The only, the only reason I would propose going to limited is to drive more recycling. That, that to me is, there's a clear connection there. If we're not willing to do that, then unlimited, unlimited is, is how it's gonna end up. I don't think there's really any limit on recycling anyway.
No.
So, you know, I, I understand the cost saving, and so I stay with, with once every two weeks on the, on the recycling. So I'm, I'm listening to some managers, and that makes some sense to me, in terms of the, the volume of recycling. If we go to a limited trash pickup to a, to a, to recycling, we're gonna give more recycling. We're gonna go from where we're at now, about twenty, or about seventeen, eighteen percent, and that's gonna rise.
Well, the suggestion I had was that we would have unlimited trash like we do now, that's what Mrs. Campbell's had.
Recycling.
And then recycling, I insist on a ninety-six gallon container every two weeks. That would be, those are the only two options we have now. We're not limiting trash at all.
On either?
On either one, yeah.
I, I would, I think we should consider that, but I mean.
Then that would be absurd, Ed.
That's a trust in council, and I, I'll allow that support.
At our last meeting, though, the city of Dayton said that our recycling percentage was around fifty percent. Half of, half of our residents were recycling.
Well, we, we talked about it in terms of diversion. I think the number came out around seventeen or eighteen percent. The amount of trash that we divert from the landfill, and that's how they would measure recycling, is how much do you divert from landfills?
Correct. Your participation's actually fifty percent of your version, and seven percent, or fifteen numbers, you're both actually.
That's based on tonnage?
Correct. So. And his comment, related to the Cincinnati suburb that he gave, was thirty percent.
Right.
And that was with a limited program. So we have unlimited, and yet we're still diverting seventeen percent. So I don't necessarily know, and of course, there's all kinds of things, demographics, households, et cetera, et cetera, that come into play there. So I don't necessarily know that education, or different, that limiting refuse, general refuse to the landfill is going to significantly increase recycling. If that, I'm sure it will increase the percentage of diversion, but I don't know if it will significantly increase the percentage of diversion. When you're talking thirty percent was the reference that he gave.
Well, I mean, it's so different than an incentive on the other side, right?
Which is, which was the original suggestion from Mr. Denny, was is, okay, if I can't educate you to do it, and I can't limit you voluntarily, I'll pay you back to do it.
Yeah, or, or in this case, you'll pay to, to, to push trash out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think Brian has a good concept of what all we want. My suggestion is, let him.
Come back to us?
Let him draw up the bid contracts, have him ready for the next council, have him ready for the next council packet, let us review it, because we spent forty-five minutes talking about trash.
And we don't want to.
And.
We're trash talkers.
Yeah, we've talked a lot of trash here. Anyhow, then review it and see if we all were satisfied. Let, because I think he has a grasp of summary, what he, what we want on this, and let's.
Just kidding, you think you have a grasp on what we want?
Okay, Ms. Mitchell, very quickly, council, you got this in your leg.
I will make, I will make this quick. My name is Edith Andrew Shaw, I live at eleven twenty-five May Apple Avenue. Most people say they want me for their, my experience, but very few people really do. But at this point, I'm thinking, I'm gonna give you a, a little bit of my experience. About ten years ago, we had a business here in Riverside that had a serious rodent problem. They did clean it up, it took a lot of work. The main thing they had to do was get the trash up off the floor, and make sure it got disposed of in a timely manner, and clean up, clean up their, their business, plus a few other things. I've seen other businesses that begin to have the same type of problem, and it's always because of trash.
But we don't do businesses.
Yeah, we're just, we're just concept.
But if you go storing trash in your garage for two weeks, you are, I can guarantee you, you are going to have a rodent.
We're only recycling, we're only storing recycling.
Recycling has had food in it, no matter how well you rinse it. Because this business also had the same concept on some things, this is why they ended up with pests. Not only will you have rodents and critters, you will get skunks, the possums, it's all the food source. You know, unless you're gonna wash it in your dishwasher, and I'm not gonna do that, you're gonna have a rodent problem, a critter problem.
I, I, I totally disagree with you, but I want.
You do want the bigger recycle bin.
Okay, thank you, I disagreed with you, but, um, thanks for, I know I'm allowed to do that to you.
Yeah, you are.
Thank you, thank you, okay. Mr. Manager? Do you kinda know what we?
I'm having, I think. I'm gonna try and summarize, I, I heard that we now have three options. We want the manager to try and frame into, I, I'd like, of course, to review what those three options are, give the manager a little clearer, uh, concept.
I agree with that. You want me to attempt to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Option number one, just like we do it now. Option number two, unlimited trash, about a ninety-six gallon toter every two weeks. Option number three.
For recyclables.
For recyclables, yes. Option number three, sixty-four gallon, oh, we didn't say, any size gallon container. Limited, any size gallon container, and any size gallon.
Recycle.
Recycling, every week, both every week? Yes.
That's what we have now, huh?
That's what we have now.
No.
No, no, we have the first.
We have number one now, we don't have number three. Number three is.
I think he can use the one.
Number three is limited, you're only allowed to put.
Oh, limited.
Okay, so.
So. Recap number three again.
Option number three, Steve, what's yours?
Okay, well, my, my suggestion gonna be limited trash, maybe we set it to sixty-four gallons, weekly pickup. Recycling, a container also.
What size?
I don't care, sixty-four, whatever we choose. And I don't care if it's bi-weekly or weekly.
But just say weekly, because if you're limiting, we'll go back to what you were saying, if it's limited, then you're gonna have problems.
That's not clear?
Uh, no, I, I, okay, um, for the sake of argument, as we do it now, got it. On the unlimited for both, I'm assuming you want to mandate containers.
Oh, wait, what was the question?
That you want to mandate containers.
For limited.
For unlimited.
For the first one?
Un, unlimited is like we do it now.
Yeah, whatever we're doing right now.
Number two was whatever we do now, only recycles every two weeks. Number three was.
Hear me out. The issue, part of the issue is, part of the issue is saving money, right? That's big.
That's a big one.
Okay, now, out of the horse's mouth, one of the ways that they reduce expenses to the end user is by limiting the number of compensation claims that they have to pay to employees for lifting containers. So if you want to provide the variety of services, and you're going to begin to mandate. you're going to compel recycling through whatever means that you, this, that you determine.
Encourage.
Do you want, you, you, uniformity is what gives you the efficiency and the effectiveness. So to that extent, if you are going to limit recyclables, then do you want to compel containers? Every person has to have a container.
For all three plans.
Under, as we do it now.
Only for your plan.
As we do it now, you have the option to get a container from the provider, you can go to Lowe's, Home Depot, you can just put your bags out of there, that's how we currently do it, that's what you've asked, that one's loud and clear. Then there's the one where you want to compel recycling every two weeks. If you're going to compel recycling every two weeks, easiest way to do that is to provide a container for them to use for recycling every two weeks. If you're going to mandate they have the container for recycling, it would follow that you would mandate that you're going to give them the container for trash as well.
Why?
It just makes it easier and less expensive to pick it up?
In theory. And then the final, if you're going to do limited waste and unlimited recycling, you are going to have to compel a container for both of them.
Which is right around a million dollars in the container fees. Costs.
That's the cost of it.
To the third one. But that's gonna be passed on to us.
So, the longer your contract, the less it costs.
Right.
Um, let's see how all three shake out? I, I don't know, I don't, you're still questioning number two, right?
I, I just need to know if you're going, if we are going as a community to compel waste containers under the second option, you're already going to help everyone have a recycling container. Under that option.
What's that, what size is our recyclable container now?
Eighteen now.
They're distributed thirty-two.
Well, you can get more than one, you can get it.
He can get bigger ones too.
Yeah, you have to carry them.
He can get up to ninety-six.
So actually what you're saying is two and three aren't any different?
No, I, no, I am saying that. All I'm asking is, is under option two, you already are going to compel them to have a recycled container. Do you not also want to compel them to have a waste container? You're already making them have one. Do you want to make them have two?
And the reason you would want to have, compel them to have two is because it saves on workman's comp.
Which is what he said. If you just, if you make everybody have the container, they make the determination on whether or not it's auto or semi-auto, and in either instance, they're lifting fewer containers, which means, should reduce injuries at work, which means it should reduce workers comping, which means it should reduce our costs.
If, if you had managed, change.
Right.
Well, that's, if we do that on the unlimited with the, the manned container or everything? And can the people pick their own choice of how big?
What I would, what, what I would do is I would simply set up a minimum. So under option two, for trash, unlimited, weekly pickup, I would mandate that the provider do a sixty-four gallon container, and it is the option of the resident or the homeowner, the property, whomever, that I have the opportunity to buy up a container if I so choose. But the minimum to ninety-six gallon, the minimum container that every resident would be provided under the second option is a sixty-four gallon container for trash. For recycling, which you want picked up every two weeks, I would mandate a ninety-six gallon container.
Okay. Okay, for ease of time limitation and that, I think that we should do number two that way.
Okay.
Which way? Mandate containers.
Unlimited container, but everybody mandated one container. For both.
And we're doing recycling every two weeks? Well, that's, that, that's plan two.
That's plan two we're talking about.
That's plan, plan two, I, I really wanted it unlimited trash and like Dayton does it now, but if you don't think that's gonna help us, then no.
Well, you still unlimited trash.
But it's a limited container. No, you're saying unlimited trash. Dayton says you gotta have it all unlimited.
That would be limited, that's option number three.
Mr. Kirk, you understand?
Well.
I'm not sure I did.
Well, if you have unlimited trash, under number two, if you have unlimited trash.
Right.
And you just, and you give them a sixty-four gallon container. And you, you have recycling every two weeks, but in a ninety-six gallon container. You're still gonna have the same amount of trash coming out of the house, and what's gonna happen is, and you have the same thing on number three, where they don't have enough room in one container, they're gonna put it in the other. So if they run out of space in recycling, they're gonna throw it into the regular trash. If they run out of space in the regular trash, you're gonna throw it into recycling, which defeats the purpose. And I'm not sure I see that much difference between number two and number three. And I'm not sure I see that much difference between number two and number one. If you're going unlimited trash, it's unlimited trash, regardless of the size of the container, 'cause you give a sixty-four gallon container, but they can put trash bags out to right next to it or on top of it.
Yeah, that's why I don't understand why it has to be a limited container, um, on trash. I can't, it'd be, oh, I guess I do understand the, the comment that it's gonna save on workman's comp.
But that idea didn't come from the city manager, that idea came from council. Having a sixty-four gallon container to drive more, uh, trash into the recycle process.
All we're doing is just give him direction for the primitives to get bids. We're not voting on yet, we're just primitives. So let him draw up the primitives, let him go out there and let us review the primitives when he has it done and make sure that's all how the three bids we want.
If you can get any ideas, save.
And, you know, then, let's go, take it out for the bid, and when the bids come back, then we'll make our decision on what we go by.
Well, I think if we're gonna do the recyclables every two weeks, we need to size that container to ninety-six gallon.
Yeah, it is, it is ninety-six gallon.
No, sixty-four.
It was ninety-six and they changed sixty-four.
No, we didn't say that.
No, we didn't. Yeah, we said ninety-six. So, but you know, let him get his primitives, 'cause we are ready. I can't believe we spent over an hour.
Well, I want to get this right.
We'll get it right, just letting him get the primitives and let us look at it, and we make sure it's exactly the way we want our contracts bended on.
And in the Senate program on recycling.
On every one. So.
Very quick, very, very quick.
We can add one more to that, there's still y'all dictating to the caller, uh, what the system's gonna be. Let the caller have one more bid, him ask the caller if one more bid, what would be the cheapest.
So, just, let's.
Okay. Mr. Manager, you kinda got it?
You can handle it, sure. There you go.
Ending the Senate program on all of it.
Okay, next thing is, I wanna, we, we wanna talk a little bit about our trip to Turkey. Welcome, Mr. Wick, glad to see you. And, uh, I just wanna say this guy was, Anthony was our guide and our, our savior many times. And, uh, so we're gonna talk a little bit about Turkey. So I'd like for Bob, Bob, I want you all to know, Bob was, did a great job. He, uh, he was, uh, out there and, um, he made it fun sometimes and very serious other times, so we were very, uh, very good. So, uh, I'd like to come to the middle and, uh, start the conversation, and I'll let you guys take it from there, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Very good. Okay, you guys wanna come up here and dig? All right, first thing, I'd just like to give a little perspective on, on the history of the Antichka Turks. The Antichka Turks, uh, were part of, uh, you guys help me out here with them, were part of old Russia. And when Russia broke up, uh, they became part of Georgia, the country of Georgia. Georgia really doesn't care for them to be there. For that reason, they are being persecuted very heavily in Georgia. So in order to help them find a homeland, because now they don't feel like they're residents of Turkey, they don't feel like they're residents of Russia, their derbies definitely do not want to be residents of Georgia. They want a homeland. We started in Dayton with about a hundred and fifty families two years ago. Now we have over four hundred families, and they are continuing to come. And so we wanted to provide opportunity for them, and this is where I'm going to step back, and we're gonna let these folks, uh, whichever one wants to go first, to talk about the opportunities we talked about and how we went forward with this process.
Well, first of all, Mayor, I want to thank you and thank the council and certainly your city manager for making certain that Riverside was represented on this, uh, what I called a trade mission of opportunity and to foresee future things that can come back to Riverside as well as our region and state. Obviously, I can say to you that you had great representation with your director of planning and economic director, Mr. Murray, and certainly your mayor. They both had a very strong, uh, part of the trip. Each was a very vital part of explaining to individuals such as prime ministers. We were not able to meet with the prime minister, well, we met with the deputy. The prime minister was there as well as obviously present, understood that we were in country. So it's a very high level visit for, uh, for those of us coming out of Ohio. That said, uh, we have in the years, the last three and a half, four years, we've had been engaged with the country of Turkey. The US government has always looked at Turkey favorably because it is a gatekeeper to what is happening into the Middle East. That had opened doors once, which you're, the mayor say about the disenfranchisement of a people. They chose to come to Dayton, once they got to the region, they ended up finding that this was a much better place than being in Idaho or New York or any other part of the United States that they were sent to. Some of you know that I was governor of Bonyvich's director. And at that time, I started working with Turkish individuals, there's a large percentage of them in Yannostal. So it's not that they're new to our state, because that goes back to the eighties. It's just that they're new to our region. They've come in and taken houses in the lower end of Troy, that area where a lot of our immigrants came in and, and made real futures for their children and futures for our community. They've taken those little houses and made them very marketable. In fact, they've changed the whole image of that corridor. So that houses that were not, were blatant and blatant in the community, now are very strong housing market there, where people wanting to come back in. They've given us back a community, so they've made an investment with their money, their time and their energy. So of course this trip was very important to look at what other things we're doing in this region. And thank you for the cemetery, that means something to the Antichka Turkish community.
That's all I had to say was we, we, they've got a cemetery forum and all the leaders and the presidents of the chambers and the mayors all were very, uh, very impressed with that, 'cause again, it gives them a homeland, it gives them a place.
And His Excellency, the, the vice or deputy prime minister, please note in other countries, we have presidents, the power in Turkey, the prime minister and deputy prime minister, those are the decision makers there. So you can imagine what this was. Bob had an opportunity to talk about economic development, not only for what, uh, you offer here, but also looking at what is possible without, throughout the region. And obviously, they also had an interest in the state. I'm gonna stop there, Bob, and kind of let you go on.
Willie, I guess what I'll transition to is how warmly we were received. These are very, uh, warm people, they really extended the welcome to us beyond what we would have perceived. Everywhere we go, we were greeted with open arms, from the prime minister's office all the way down to the local chamber of conferences to the guy on the street. Uh, I never felt safer.
That's 'cause we had Secret Service with us the whole time.
Besides. Long with that.
Well, they were interesting souls, I'll tell you.
Like Anthony alluded to, Turkey's a very strong economy. They were, they were building from one into that country to the other. Uh, we, you know, it was just a faddish treble around, the opportunities are immense, the work we have to do to get back in touch with the people that so warmly received us is immense. And, uh, we do see this as a regional effort, we do see this as helping DDC connect with the local people in the Turkish country. We do feel like we have the benefit of the Turkish, the Hishkai community which is here, which negates any language barriers that may exist between our two countries. Again, I would stress the willingness on the part of the Turkish people to come and participate in this economy. And that Turkey is a country extremely strong, their habitations twenty-eight years. They're, uh, they do not have a banking system problem, they're moving forward, they are strategically located, and again, these are very good friends of ours, both at, at the very high levels. And what we're trying to do is make it very personal now. We met people that will become our friends and we can rely on for future economic development. I invited Anthony for two reasons. One, uh, the first was to tell a little bit outside the local people what went on there, but also to thank you for his leadership, for getting us together. And he was the, uh, the ringmaster of the event. He was an excellent conduit between the Turkish community and ourselves, so I'm gonna thank you personally for that. Uh, what we have in front of you covered up are just a few of the gifts that we received, again.
So one, one thing before, before you do that, just one last thing, I, I just, the, the whole idea became clear is that if we ask the Turkish government to, or not, or not the Turkish, the Turkish businesses to come to and buy in America, be part of America and create jobs here, then the folks coming in from the Antichka Turks can have jobs, and they'll hopefully give us enough jobs that there will be more jobs for the Americans. So, that, I.
And you said that, Mayor, you know, the other part is that they want to do business. The United States has said it made it okay for us to do business. So it's not just what we're doing here, this is national. So it makes sense for us to really get ahead of the curve. We have an opportunity that other parts of the United States haven't really moved on a lot. With four different mayors, four different large communities, some of which.
Chamber of Commerce.
Were much larger than our whole region. But everywhere you look in Turkey, because it's, it's multi-use of everything, businesses everywhere, small and medium sized businesses. These individuals want to participate, they now know where you are, and so you can bet they've been Googling all about Riverside. Uh, I got some emails today from some of the folks, uh, that were back there. These folks have become a part of the Turkish community now that I think can be your drum majors for greater opportunities in economic development. So I think it's just a great opportunity now that we are gonna have to do a lot of work from this point forward, obviously. The council general of the United States, uh, also said that they welcome our involvement in helping to produce partnerships and business opportunities. So as you can see, not only were we there for the Turkish side, we had the highest level of US government.
We had a meeting with, with those people, folks too, and they were very encouraging to us to continue to, uh, move forward with this process. So is there any questions about, before we get to that, is there any questions that anybody has about, uh, about our mission and what we were doing? Anybody from the audience, yes, Sissy?
You know, I'm always gonna have a question. How many of your nationality are already here in the Riverside area?
Well, you, you have, you have the Muslim cemetery here.
Right.
You know, over off of Troy. And obviously, there are some, uh, Turkish individuals throughout the area, I don't know what the number is. We have about four hundred and fifty families there in the Dayton area that are Hishka Turkish, not just Turkish.
We also have living.
Hishkas are.
The Hishka ones are the ones from Georgia that are persecuted.
Do they have a church in the Riverside area?
Is there a mosque?
Well, we don't, we, there, there isn't a mosque, but I can assure you are, the president. but I can assure you are the president, Islam, and others, and Bob is excellent at what he does, so you can bet he stays on top of making sure that we are abreast of what is going on here in the community. And he certainly shared with us, he and the mayor, that there is land and things to be looked at as we pursue those things. Now, as to say to you that they would do a mosque here, I can't say that. But there is a large number of Muslims in our area.
Well, we are reaching out to churches or Muslims that are not born in the United States, in my committee, to try to get them involved with.
With the beauty festival.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And we're making a very strong attempt to contact all these people. And that's why I wanted to see if you had one, at least that we wanted.
Well, they do have a community center that they just purchased, the Antichka Turk Community Center. They purchased it about a month ago or so ago.
Is it in Riverside?
It is actually, they, the old Bomberger Center on East Pitt Street.
Let's see, this is a Riverside Community Festival, so we're trying to reach out to residents.
They're all gonna end up here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If he's already got one, then I will be able to do it.
Two things, what the general public might not know is we have quite a few Turkish pilots that are practicing in Wright-Patt and at Springfield, and quite a few of them are living in Page Manor.
Absolutely.
That I would like to read that.
Absolutely.
Page Manor is within my area of Riverside.
What, the other thing we found out on our trip we didn't know before we left is Riverside, along with being the home of the National Museum of the United States Air Force, is also home now of the largest Muslim cemetery in the United States of America by about an acre, by about an acre.
A, everyone else.
And that's considerable. So, that's, you know, again, it's a community we're reaching out. And I say it before, one of the lines I use is we're the holiest of pollers. We have eighty-two churches in Riverside.
I know, unless I was in my class.
A Sikh temple, a Buddhist temple, the Muslim cemetery. And so, again, we covered all our bases.
You know, I never thought about, when Bob and Mayor would mention that, it really went over well to those individuals who run the country. You know, we sometime take like cemeteries for granted. Well, you wouldn't take that for granted if you were a Muslim and you had to be buried in a certain way. And especially for our elders, you know, our grandparents and great-grandparents. The other part of that, I just thought, ma'am, that she said that, and maybe another opportunity for the Guinness Book of Records as well, to bring, you know, I, you know, because of economic development is my background, I'm always looking at tying that to marketing and finding another way to bring visibility to the community. And it was important enough to them that they take that very seriously. And that was the deputy prime minister.
Yes, yeah, I just would like to get everyone, no matter who they are, involved in our festival because that's what it's for.
Well, I'm sure that with the Islam, our president.
The unity among all of Riverside.
Okay. Thank you all, and move over here.
Again, this is some of the things we received. Again, in many cases, you know, we're a region of about two point three million. And when you talk to the, you know, Istanbul population, and these are some of the things we received. I don't, I don't know if we wanna walk through them or not, but.
Yeah, just question.
Sure, go ahead.
This here was given to us by the chamber, I believe, of Istanbul.
The chamber, yes.
Yeah, Istanbul chamber. And this is just one of many of the kinds of plaques that they have. And they're all just given in a very nice box, which was kind of a challenge getting them on an airplane. But, so, Bob received one of these, I received five of these. So, every time that I heard, yeah, four, I guess, I'm sorry, of these. And every time I went to, no, it was five. Every time we went to somebody, we always gotta get, the mayor's gotta give us very similar.
I didn't receive this. I received this. The city received this.
Yeah, these are the cities.
These, this stays here. And that's an enamel tile, Turkish tile, which is a very famous process that they use and very well-known, and they're a fortune.
Now, they are known throughout the world for towel industry. And obviously, you'll see that that's hand-painted. Everywhere we walked was marbled because that's another commodity in the country, coupled with aerial space defense. In fact, everything that Bob would talk about and the mayor, it just aligned up with what they were already doing, whether with us or somewhere else in the, in the world, the United States.
Our top five economic sectors go very well with their top five economic sectors.
They're very popular for their plates. And as I said, some of the gifts I received weren't just that way that they were plates. And this is from the city of Bursa. Bursa was having a festival when we were there and just getting started. We had gone to Anchor the night before, and they were having a huge festival that night. And we were very well-received. We got a ride around in a golf cart. And it was, it was quite a night. But Bursa gave us this and this and a towel.
Large book.
And also the book that I hope you'll all take an opportunity to read. It's a bit heavy, but we can send that around.
And Bursa, actually, we talked to their chamber. Their chamber, I felt, was more enthusiastic than even the anchor in Istanbul because Bursa was a little smaller, a little more like our community. And we're very, very, very involved and intrigued by our presentation.
They gave us the most stuff. That's the best.
The presentation takes.
I have most stuff for that.
And the governor of Bursa. We met with the mayor and the governor. And the governor was very, he had done his homework about Riverside and the Dayton region and the city line. So, you can see how progressive they are as a community. These gentlemen and this lady here, Ms. Rain just picked up the book. You can see, that's quite a book. That is a lot in a city. I wish we could, something we're gonna have to do in our region too to be able to showcase what the region has as well as our individual cities within that region.
And this here was given to the city, not to, we mayors didn't get one of these. I was kinda glad because it was so heavy. I'm gonna get it on the plane. It's very, very heavy. I'll pass it around. It's from the Republic of Turkey's Ministry of Interior. And so, they just gave one to each city and asked us to pass them on to you.
That's the building, that's his building.
And as he's saying out to you, please note in April, we will be hosting a trade summit in April here. And of course, when we had an opportunity, I think that I put the council general in a position to say that the US government will also be able to help us as well as to look at and give us a point person to work with. But we hope to bring in those trade missions here in April. And I would assume that knowing your wonderful mayor and your excellent director of planning and economic development, they will be also coming through Riverside to see what you have to offer here.
Absolutely. There you go.
There's assortment of other things up here.